Good evening on here. Thank you for joining us this morning for the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Montessorino Community Center Committee Regular Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few principles to assist the committee, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's Zoom meeting, it's being used to allow public participation with the community centers, maybe a special, or regular meeting, sorry. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a committee member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and unable to speak to the committee. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option for permanent participation. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen, cannot provide feedback or public comment. And lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all of us in the meeting must be taken by roll call.
Ready? It is nine oh five A M. on Wednesday, April seventeenth, and I'm calling the meeting of the Community Center Committee of Montessorino to order. Maybe you have all calls.
Yes. Public member Harrington, not here yet. Public member M. Allen?
Here.
Public member L. Allen?
Here.
Public member Rengansy is not here. Public member Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Ziber?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Councilmember Megachuk?
Present.
And Mayor Wolchimer?
Present.
Can everybody please check that your microphones aren't on, or those people who followed his proceedings online, thank you. Any orders of the day? Probably not, since there is very much on the agenda. Did we receive any communication, sorry? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the committee here on subjects that are not on the agenda? Anybody online who wishes to address the?
No, hands are raised.
Okay. Did we receive any written communications?
None.
Are there any announcements? Just going through the agenda officially here. Unfinished business. All right, then we will straight on to new business. The first order of new business is to approve the minutes of the February first, two thousand and twenty-four Community Center Committee Special Meeting.
Still move. Second.
Any discussion?
Can we open it for public?
Okay. Do we need a roll call? Okay, we just wrote.
Um, can you open it for public comments?
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to comment on these minutes? No?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised? In that case, only in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So that's seven.
Zero.
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 Thank you. Moving on to the main topic on the agenda today, which is a topic that really came from the community, from the city council. Considerational options for the community center project, including an award, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to start with a little brief introduction. As you know, this is our first meeting since February first. And I did let me go to the bottom line and sort of read the last page of the book before council last night decided to reject all the bids that came in. And I don't and Daryl will give a explanation of what happened there and where we go next from here. We had no meetings in between now and very February first, because this whole process of getting this was going on. And it's hard to have a committee meeting if we don't know what we're going to build, we don't know what we're going to do. So since there was nothing new to share, I felt it was better to to cancel the meetings in between February first and now. I spoke to some of you about it, without violating the Brown Rule, and the consensus was that it's better to skip these meetings until we know what we're going to do, where we're going, until there is some news to share. There's definitely news to share now. And for that, I'll leave the floor to our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, committee members, thanks for coming out this morning. Good to report back to you on where we're at today. As you may recall, we put our project out to bid and received those bids on April fifth of this month. We received four bids, four bid packages that morning. And the breakdown of those bids were the lowest bid from S and H Construction at one million, one million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. The second lowest bid was one million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars by Walker Construction. And just behind it was Messiah Construction at one point nine six two eight sixty-six million. And then we had a very high bid at three point two million. That was by Demetay Construction. So from one point six million to three point two million was the spread. And there were two in the center very close together, one point nine, one point nine. As you may recall, the city budget for this project is one point two million dollars. The engineer's estimate that we basically got from our architect who designed it was one point five million, and it came in even over that, one point six million. And that doesn't account for a ten percent contingency, which we normally levy on the end of that in case anything comes up during construction. So we presented that to our council last night, and unanimously they rejected all bids due to the cost and redirected staff to go back to the drawing board and see what we could do to come up with a more cost-effective solution by stripping out all the niceties and maintaining what we have to have to maintain the intent of the project and to maintain the grants that we qualify for in the project. So my task now is to meet with the architect, which I'm going to try to get with this week, and see what we can do to the project to make it come into a more economically friendly type of project for the council to evaluate. So what that entails, we're not sure yet of how we're going to strip that down, but we're going to try to just give exactly what we have to have and deal away with the niceties at this point and see what that number may fall with at the next bid. And if there's any other options, we'll also try as quickly as possible to look at what those may be in a short period of time and get back to council this next month. So that's where we're at. So back to the drawing boards. We need to find a more cost-effective way to accomplish this. I'm here with any questions that you guys may have. We were down last night, and several of you were here too, so.
I'd like to add one thing to what you said. The lowest bid remained in one point six six million. But we also have to add a ten percent or contingencies to that. There were several other options included in that bill. So if you add all of that up, it came up to one point nine million dollars
Correct.
with a budget of one point two million dollars.
That is correct.
That was the anti-decision of the council last night, except a hundred thousand dollars. So council instructed the, or asked the staff to, you know, look at options, what can we do? Councilmember Megachuk gave a good presentation about how to approach that. Called it value engineering. What is really valuable in the community center that we want? What do we really want? What do we really need? And I think what we need is more important than what we want. I think we need to go back to basics. What do we need? What is the purpose of the community center? So that's, those are the questions that hopefully will be addressed over the next couple of weeks.
Correct. And there are a few other directions we received too, Mayor. More outreach to the community, perhaps maybe with some type of a flyer or something. Councilman Megachuk commented that we have done an effort like that in the past, so we needed to look at how we can incorporate that. There may be more outreach of what people want, what they don't want. Another direction was, let's look at the fiscal status of our city and our budget, which our city manager would help us out with that. The third direction we were given is to look at operations of the potential community center. What would that look like? What kind of programming, what kind of cops would be involved? I'll probably have Sarah back here to help me with some of the operational type of projections and estimates of what that would look like. So those are really other directions we received.
I would just kind of, I I found the meeting, I thought it was a very good discussion among the council and among those of us who are here. And I think my takeaway point was is that I thought council member Turner summed it up, which is yeah. There are always a lot of bells and whistles, but there, we have other needs for money. Former Mayor Lawler said, you know, he'd use a sidewalk on Dave's Avenue, and so it's an allocation of what taxpayer dollars we want to spend on a community center and what taxpayer dollars we want to spend on other things. And so I think that finding out just where we, what the options are are great. My late father used to say, if you allow the longevity, then numbers are bullshit. So I think we have to see numbers. And I think until the numbers come in, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Mayor, what we can do, because the financial decision would be made by the city council, not by this group. And so once the city council decides what it wants to spend on this, then I think this group can work implement it and, you know, then it could happen. But it's, you know, spending decisions with the council. So, but again, I thought it was a very very useful whole discussion. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do to try to get something, you know, more fiscally conservative I mean, a useful presentation.
Go ahead.
Do you have, do you have my presentation? What I like to do with the chair's permission is walk through. All right. Question.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Did the did the bids break down the cost of different elements?
Only, only the ad alternatives were broken out. So we didn't
Only the what?
The alternatives, like we had the chimney was an alternative, the shower was an alternative, the E V charger was an alternative, the low voltage portion was an alternative. But for like all the plumbing, electrical, everything, that was not broken down to to the level where we're getting systematic, it was out.
Really big surprises and stuff, wow, we didn't know that would cost so much. Did anything stand out in particular?
Not really. I think it's pretty consistent with what we're hearing from all the contractors of the the cost of labor these days and everything else. That's the cost. And remember too, that we are paying prevailing wage, so you're looking at maybe a fifteen, twenty percent at least increase. You can see on the schedule in town. They have to pay.
Well, I think I'll call that first. Okay.
If this is a comment, it's not a question.
Okay.
So I do it afterwards.
Okay. Let's wait for Mr. Allen to come back with the call here. Does anybody else have a question? I'm actually engineering that will be up in here. Well, I brought up the point that the bids did not include landscaping precisely. It would be an additional cost that we have at this point considered. There are a couple of other smaller things that will probably end up. And so I was fully in support of the decision last night to basically go back to not square one, but take a few steps back, consider what we really need. The notion was also brought up to do another survey. There had been two surveys, which at some point I think will be presented here. But several council members felt that in another survey, it would serve serve clear on some of the purpose of the community center.
I have a question. This is probably very naive, because I know nothing about the bidding process, but what would be wrong with telling the bidders, what can you do for one point two million dollars?
There's a strict code that we have to follow through the state. We can't dictate to them how they do their bids or or direct them to reduce their bids. And it has to be an independent type of process that they
I mean, you couldn't ask them, what can you leave off?
Well, we're going to go, that's where we're going now. We can't do that during the bid process, but typically, when we have a situation like this where they're too high, we reject bids and we go back and we do exactly what you're
So you can go back to these four bidders and say, what could you do?
We can't. We can't answer those questions. Right.
Okay, thank you. Regarding this survey, when I took it, I didn't realize that there were choices. I thought this was a done deal, and therefore this is what we would do. So to me, a new survey with more explanation would be better. We just didn't understand.
We don't know yet who is going to organize the survey and what format it will take, but I absolutely agree with your point. The previous surveys took, in fact, that we are going to do somewhat extensive community center and to give and took off from there, and what would you like to see, what would you use it for? I would like to start at the very beginning. Very first basic question is, do you want a community center? That's the basic question. And as I told the council last night, I talked to a lot of my neighbors with regards to the different issue the last couple of weeks. Majority of them did not know about a community center project. They didn't know what was going on.
Yeah.
Which is kind of strange. It's been going on since two thousand and ten. Decades, literally. So, and to me, that shows a little bit how important it is to do a good survey to reach as many residents as possible. It's a very basic question.
Yeah, I was going to say, based on what I heard last night, I'm going to volunteer to put together what I call a more encompassing thing to address those things. And I'll bring it to the next, kind of, the next committee meeting, and then the group can decide. Because I'd like to get some feelings about that too. And also, as a former mayor Lawler said, what money do we want to spend on this? What money do we want to spend on sidewalks by, you know, the Dave's Avenue School? Because it's their choices. And these are all taxpayer dollars. So let's find out where they want to spend it. So I want to been thinking about it for a while, I'm going to put something together, and I'll bring it to the next meeting, and then group to look at it and decide if they think that that would be a useful, because we've already sent these other surveys out. It would be a useful follow-up survey to get more data for us and also more data for the city council.
Mayor, may I add just one other comment that came from one of our contractors who bid the project? There is another procurement process allowed by the state. It's called a design-build process. And what that process is, is we establish an amount of money that you can spend on a project, and you basically design and build along to a certain amount of money. And you make decisions during the process of what to lop out, what to add on as you build the project. So it's, it is allowed now by our state if we follow certain procedures, but that is an option. We'll get a look at it.
How does that work? Because this has to be open to all contractors?
It has to be open to all contractors. There is a procurement process that they have to qualify. It's more of a qualifying by your experience and what you have done, rather than a finished product. And so it's
There might be a more efficient process than
It would be
this iterative.
It could be.
And I thought for a bid for this, no, it's too expensive.
Right.
That's a bid, there's no, still too expensive.
Right. You start with the shell and go from there and build as much as you can with the shell within that, and you're making decisions along the way. But that is an option, just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Talking about the survey, I do not recall if the council of yesterday made a decision, a recommendation about the survey.
No, it didn't. It was up to this group. We need to make a recommendation. And on that issue, I would like to take a stab at what I call a more encompassing thing, bring it back to this group, and then this group can decide what it wants to recommend to the city council between the voice count, well, the voice count survey and then the Brian survey, and I'd like to do one. And then this group can decide on the three, what they want to recommend to the city council.
I think you were out of the room on it was, does, does the city want a community center? That, I think, that is so basic. And I, I like that question. Because a number of people I've talked to don't want it. And they ask me why I want it. And then when I tell them why, oh, that's a pretty good idea, I hadn't thought about that. And
Sure.
It's amazing. Yeah.
So did you have any comments on this?
I have a ton of comments, but I, what I'd like to do is take up the comment, because I thought we were going to ask questions first.
Well, this is just an informational, this is the usual process.
We do have to open it for public comment, though, even though it's informational. Even though you guys aren't going to keep directions today. Let me know if you want me to.
Okay, then we'll do the public comment. Sorry. I like what Daryl was saying about a chance to work in a design-build process, because at that point it's more open to value engineering, which is the only way we're going to get the base costs recognized. I mentioned the last time that the other alternative is to try and fundraise the shortfall in the community. Yeah, we probably need to raise six, seven hundred thousand dollars and move it in that direction. And it has to come up, but there's another alternative to building my good plan is to go find six or seven hundred thousand dollars and make that work. It's a wealthy community, you might be able to do that. And no one has advanced that. I advanced it the last time, but got shut off. So I think it's an opportunity that we haven't looked at yet to build what we need, if we want to build it at all. That's the first question. I thought you had a question, Colin?
No, I don't, I, I can make a ton of comments.
Okay. Let's, in that case, let's do a public comments. Is there anybody in the audience? Yes, there is.
I think I recognize her. I need to turn this on. I'm back. First of all, I wanted to thank council for your decision last night to reject the bid, because as we know, our budget is very modest, and we do not have the resources to cover a one point nine million dollar project, and we have other things we need to do in the city. I do support a community center. We have usable space, it's just sitting there. It's an asset that we're not using. We have a lot of costs considered, not only just the construction, but afterwards, maintenance and things like that. So all of these things need to be considered. I think the idea of starting out with a brand-new survey, asking people if they want one, and what they would like to see is obviously the best place to start. And then after that, I highly recommend taking both plans, the existing latest plan and the original plan. And we've got several members who are former S and A commissioners here. Compare those plans. See what's different. The original plan did not change the footprint of the building, which is a cost-saving thing. So it's even then, just starting with that and comparing those plans and seeing where we can come to differences and keeping it at that one point two budgeted number would be, I, I suggest that's a good starting place, because we already have those plans in existence, and you can definitely see the difference. That said, this is a great meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody participating online who wants to address the committee?
No, their hands are raised.
No, hands are raised. All right. So that's the public comment.
Okay. So the process from staff, I'll kind of repeat a little bit of what happened last, what's in Mr. Jordan's report. Both Mayor Wolchimer and I were here when the bids were open. And that was on a Friday. And they came in, and then Mr. Jordan determined, are they responsive? They were all, all four of them were responsive for his report. I thought there was going to be a level setting done, but apparently there was not sufficient data, according to Mr. Jordan in the, in the bids, to actually level set. And what I mean by that is, are they all apples for apples? So for example, one, one bidder I know put in a contingency, and there's a contingency on a contingency on a contingency. So we ended up with a hundred and ten percent of this one particular contingency. So they, I think there's apples and oranges in there. The next step would be to analyze the bids, the features and the costs. That was unable to be done, but it was done through identifying what alternatives were and having the bids for the alternatives, which were given. And there was a recommendation of the alternatives to the city council, which is either accept the bid or reject the bid or change it. Go to the next slide, please. So to repeat what, what Daryl said, here, the number is up here, the three point two seven, one point nine six, one point nine four, and one point six nine. So we've got two bids that are really close, and then one bid that is beneath the others. And I am wondering how much supervision was included in the one point six nine. And sorry, I'm sort of explaining more of what my feelings are behind the bids versus the bids themselves, because I haven't seen them, but I would very much like to see them, since they're all rejected. But if they're Messiah Construction has built five homes in the city of Monte Sereno in the past nine months. That's what the gentleman said last night. So that person is fully invested and wouldn't want to have any kind of a problem that would damage Messiah Construction's brand in the city of Monte Sereno slash Los Gatos versus the low bid is from Milpitas. You know, so I'm not sure what their strategy is, and even as I think someone else said earlier, perhaps it was Mayor Wolchimer, that you can change order your way, you know, and increase the cost. If we could go to the next slide, please.
So Milpitas met the requirement within a certain number of miles. Isn't that something we had?
No, that was, you were thinking of something else. We had a construction manager room, we're considering
That's right.
Or construction advisor, I'm sorry, not a manager, construction advisor. So I think that this is very important. And if you scroll down just a tad for illustration purposes only, so this isn't definitive. I was just trying to come up with an illustrative example of what we need to do to understand what the cost of this will do to the city's finances. So if you say our reserves at six thirty twenty-four are four and a half million, and then in fiscal twenty twenty-five, our revenues are four point two, our expenses are three point nine, we make about point three a year. So then our, before the community center costs, we'd be looking at four point eight. If we spend one point seven and we get a grant of one point five, our net cost is the one point two. And the one point two comes out of the four point eight, you get three point six million. I think our minimum reserves are to be three point five. But again, what we need is a financial analysis by our finance director on this, which I think is, is a requirement. Go to the next slide, please. So the question is, is it feasible to rebid the project? And I think this is, council gave the direction last night to staff to, to reevaluate the project. But so at the left-hand side, it's analyzed So at the left-hand side, it's analyze the bids, the fe- features and the costs. Identify the must-have versus nice-to-have features, right? And that's what I term value engineering. That's the, that's the term in, in the construction industry. And then depending on what the outcome of that is, maybe there are no opportunities. The question is, is it feasible to rebid the project? Cause everyone has to go through it again, including our city engineer, et cetera. And then finalize the process to rebid the project. So if it's, if it's not feasible, then you know, you don't go ahead. But if it is feasible to rebid it, then what's the timeline to do that and to get, and, and the process to get it done? And there's a certain amount of time that you have to set out a bit. You have to advertise it and then two weeks later, people have to bid on it. That's the minimum. I believe that we gave four weeks. So we put the, the request for bid out. It was published in the newspaper. And then in other locations, and then we opened the bids, uh, four weeks later. But that could be two weeks. And I would suggest that we go to the shortest possible period to do that, if it is feasible to rebid it. Because the four bidders that know the project, they don't have to start from ground zero. They're intimately familiar with the project. So they can say, you know what, you're taking this item out, this item out, this item out. I know what my costs are. They don't have to go back to their subs and, and ask for it, for new numbers. And usually most estimates are given with, with the 90-day fuse on them. So we're, we'll be inside that 90-day fuse. Uh, go to the next slide, please. So this was the decision that was given to council on the agenda as either accept or reject all the bids. And on the cover of the agenda, it said, there was no discussion of, of postponing it to a date certain. It was just, let it go. Uh, go to the next slide, please. And this is what, uh, council directed staff to do to actually down. The top part is the same down below. It's value engineer, the features and the finishes. Then rebid the project with lower cost features and receive the bids and then find out where we are. What's the number, right? Go to the next slide, please. Oh, oh, sorry. Uh, and then at the bottom it says, short, shortest time. Possible from public bid request to opening of the bids. So let's not drag out the process so that the, the knowledge gets stale. Value engineering, this is again for illustrative purposes only, is at the left-hand side, you see the column and call that 1.69 million, whatever the number is. And there may be a couple of larger items in there, but then you get into small items that you have to change those features or finishes and reduce the cost. And, uh, on the right-hand side, value engineer, the features and finishes by having the architect work with staff to identify the nice-to-have versus must-have elements. Then bet the opportunities with the community center committee and report the results back to city council with financial projections, right? Like where will we be with our reserves, et cetera? Not just Brian coming up with some, et cetera, but you know, uh, the numbers from the city manager. And if approved by the council, then issue the new, uh, request for bids. But we can't have this drag out for months and months. This has to happen very quickly. Otherwise, you know, it's, it's not gonna be worthwhile doing. And everything's gonna have to be redone. Uh, and I will say that if we are taking features and finishes out. Our building permit will still be okay. We don't have to have, go through a, a full iteration of that. If you're taking structural elements out, then yes, you do have to do it. But if it's, um. And I also, and let me give you an example of say feature A. This committee, if you go back to the history, we said, let's, rather than having a. L-shaped building that had, sorry, the original building was a square, which is the same footprint as the, as the existing post office. Then we said, let's make it L-shaped and let's do an extension. And then this committee said, you know what, if you make an extension with a large patio, you only have one chance to increase your square footage. So make the patio at the back as small as feasible. And that's the direction we gave to Gary. And then we found out that there was too many square feet for, for occupancy and we had to dial it back a little bit. So that's kind of the history of it.
You rejected this point with your permission?
Um, I, well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, no, uh, I want, the basic point I wanna make is, uh, this commission. Never decided that we should do. The, what I call 2023 plan, changing the footprint rather than the 2021 plan. That was never presented to this commission. For decision, and I agree with former vice mayor Lawler, that if we're gonna go back and get numbers. I want to cost out both plans and then we'll give all that.
I, I, I understand that. If I could proceed.
Okay, but I, I just.
I, I understand your position, Lon.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, so one of the feat, so then the other feature that we talked about, and I'm getting to this feature A, is the ceiling. And it was fairly complex if you look at the, at the plans. And that added, I'm sorry, let me say two things. First of all, we increased the footprint and that increased the cost. Okay, so from, from the original L shape to the larger L shape, that increased the cost and square footage. Then we said, okay, and if you need a seal, a special ceiling put in. It's for noise reduction. It's gonna add actually quite a bit of money, quite a bit of cost to the project. And the question is, is that a nice-to-have or a must-have, right? And if it's a, if you have a lot of noise going on, people are obviously having some fun and the, and the facility is full. I, I don't know if, if there's a more cost-effective way to do that, but I understand that that was a very expensive component. Then you look at what the other features are, and one of the questions is that on the electricity coming in. It was unclear in the plans as to what amp service it was and. It's not, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that's an example of an extra 20 or 30,000 dollars.
That's an example you mentioned, that, excuse me, the ceiling. Do you remember the cost of that acoustic ceiling?
So I haven't, I haven't reviewed the bids. But that's one of the things, it's a, it's an opportunity for value engineering. Believe me, every one of the contract, I know that. Three of the four contractors must know the cost of that ceiling precisely, what the cost was. Right? Because they put in the bids. The other one, the lowest bid, I don't know if they, if they fully understood what was being asked. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, that might be an expensive item, but if it's under a hundred thousand, which I can't imagine it being over, it's still probably relatively small. Has to be the whole cost of the project, right?
So, one of the things that you raise is. That's only one part of the cost. I don't think there's any single item that's gonna get you down by several hundred thousand.
I don't either.
And it's gonna be an accumulation of a number of different things. It's gonna be a, a package. And that's where we have to understand it. Uh, go to the next slide, please. And to get to your point about the, the donations, right? So here, potential funding. I believe that there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more that Valley Water will give us a small cities grant for. I had this discussion with them and they said, come back with something more definitive. We can't, we can't give you. A, a grant based on pie in the sky. You need to have something very tangible for us. But I think there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more there. I think in the community, maybe there's a hundred and fifty or more. You know, you're not gonna get it just by saying, let's, you know, please contribute some money. You have to get people excited and it's not what the building is. It's what happens inside the building. That's what people will donate for. And then donations in kind. Um, the appliances and other things were very expensive. And again, value engineering, you know, do we need to have those really expensive appliances? So I only put 30,000. If I think the number is bigger and in the bid request, we can say, what's your cost of the materials? And what's your cost of the labor to install? The labor to install has to be, um, prevailing wage, which is basically union cost. And, you know, but, but we can provide the materials if we have them donated by others or we pay a lower cost for those. So that's my last slide. And again, this is for illustration purposes only. With respect to the survey, the city council did not understand the second survey. Because this, it was on the agenda in January for this committee to approve. So that we could bring it forward to city council, but that was never done. We canceled the entire meeting. Uh, agenda and it never came back, uh, during the special meeting. And it's not on the agenda today, but I think that that survey would help people, notwithstanding the fact that, uh, certain people may think that the starting point was. A fait accompli where it's going to happen, right? The community center will be built. If it is built, what do you think about it? So that information never got to council and so the council members were like, well, we need to do another survey. And to address the point on the survey, the first one that, the, that the Eagle Scout did for his project. The results of his survey were the basis of the second survey. So in terms of the ordering of the questions, we already had several hundred people that responded for, I can't remember who was a hundred and a half. But we had a basis so that we're, we weren't asking people for. For a starting point. We knew generally speaking, what our population wanted. And they were all very positive on that. So, um, there will always be a bell curve. And the question is, what's the shape of that curve, right? Do we have, uh, a few people that don't want it and a lot of people that do?
I don't know that. We don't know that. I, I don't think that the surveys we have are really valid and that's why I wanted to start from scratch with a new survey.
Right, in respect. Well, with respect, I think the survey was robust. And I think that you can only ask people a question so many times, you know?
We're gonna agree to disagree then.
That's, that's fine. So I wanted everyone to understand what went through with council and, and what the thinking is on this. But I don't think that we can wait and spend another six months on this. I think this is something we need to turn around quickly. And I also believe, I also understand that, um, Silicon Valley Clean Energy has said, hey, you know. If you can't get it done this year, we will still allow you the grant. So that gun is taken away, that, that gun is taken away from our.
That's excellent. That means that the time pressure is a little bit off, far back, so to speak. But thanks for your feedback. I, I respectfully disagree with your analysis of the, uh, surveys. And I think we need to do another survey, starting from scratch with the red questions. Um, the question is, uh, how do we go about doing that if we decide to do that? And is it our decision to do another survey or is it the council's decision to do another survey?
Surveys were a decision that this group made. And so let's take it, I'd like to take, Brian took a stab at the survey. I'd like to take a stab at the survey. The other thing I'd like to say, uh, is it seemed to be when this commission was formed. The first decision that we should have discussed and took, taken a vote on was. Did we want to, um, proceed or look again at the 2021 plan rather than starting with a brand new plan? And that's where I think this commission was presented with a fait accompli. We started with the 2023 plan. And, uh, we were halfway through the year before I even knew there was a 2021 plan. So that's why I agree with Vice Former Mayor Lawler, that I'd like Darryl to bid out the old plan and the new plan. Because I would be surprised. I agree with, we had two bits together, about 1.9 million of. Somebody tells me that's more than the real cost of the 20, uh, 23 plan. And our total, our budget was 1.2 million. That included the grants. It was only 600,000 of our taxpayer dollars. And again, as former mayor Lawler said, we have a lot of other uses for our taxpayer dollars. I'd like to bid out everything. And again, the council, not this group, will make the decision. Uh, but I'd also like to, before we take it to the, uh, council, do a survey where we ask some of these basic questions of where the. Uh, residents want to spend their taxpayer dollars, uh, because, you know, taxpayer dollars are finite. And there are a lot of ways to, um, uh, in my comments to the council, I pointed out that this month is 45 years that Mary and I have lived in the city. And I, why would we get spent enough? So I'd like to, as I said, get the numbers. Do, you know, so we're doing apples, apples, apples. And then the city council will make whatever decision the city council wants to make.
Okay, well, that fits with the, uh, direction that the council gave to staff to look at the options. What can be stripped out of the design to bring the cost from 1.1, close to 1.9 to 1.2 million? Personally, I'm a little bit skeptical that we can go from 1.9 to 1.2 all the way. So more will be needed, I think.
On this survey, I think another survey is a good idea. I think it might be worth having just sort of a text box. And say, what would you like in a, what would you like in a community center? And have people just write a few sentences rather than totally directing them, yes, no, A, B, C, D. I, responding to surveys, I sometimes feel limited. Maybe it's because I'm a talker, but. You know, I can't really express myself given the, the choices. And I think some of that is people draft them to direct the answers a certain way. So let's ask people, what, what would you like to see? And have at least one text box in the survey. And then also kind of hearing everything and going through this process. In my mind, what I think it's boiling down to is we're gonna have two options. Either we keep the existing footprint to get it into under budget. Or we fundraise, uh, to people who say, we're doing this once, let's do it right, let's have it bigger. And someone puts some serious dollars behind that. I think those are the basic two options. Because we don't, I don't know if it's even possible to get it under budget, stripping different features. And if we do, I mean, we're not stripping it down to little, right? I mean, we don't want a chintzy. This is a, a really nice community. We want high-end finishes or at least moderate. And you're just not gonna strip out hundreds of thousands of dollars changing the finishes or taking a shower out or whatever. So I think two basic options are, uh, the existing footprint. Trying to get it within budget or having some major donors that are excited about a, a bigger footprint.
Sorry, um, Steve. I just thought of an idea and I don't know if the committee would be interested in suggesting this to the council. Um, but, you know, there's a discussion of should we spend the taxpayers' money on the building? And one way to bring it to the taxpayers or the residents is to put it on a ballot. It is an election year. So there is a cost of doing that. Um, but it would be the ultimate survey if you wrote a ballot language that said, should. The city of Montessorino spend up to 1.2 million dollars to construct a community center. And then ultimately you'll have your answer through the voters. Now, it may not be the answer. You know, some people would prefer, but it is probably the most democratic way to go about it. And when it comes to surveys, you know, we can survey by going door to door. We can do a lot of things to try to get the information. As what we did with the, uh, housing element. That's probably the most effective way to get that kind of information. But what, you know, the survey is one piece, the spending of the taxpayer dollars is another piece. And then of course we have the existing building. What do you do? And that's the third piece. Going back on the history in 2020, when I first came on board. Said, I was tasked with, go find a way to do something with this building. Let's, let's get it moving. What, what can we do? What what can we do? And the idea was a community room. And at the time, it was a four hundred fifty thousand plus, a twenty five percent contingency, which was another hundred and fifty. And six hundred thousand essentially, we went out, we got a grant for a hundred and sixty eight thousand, another grant for twenty thousand. So that was two hundred thousand towards the the six hundred thousand. Um, the previous bids included the parking lot uh project. Council has since allocated another hundred twenty five thousand towards the parking lot. I believe it included the charging station being removed. It had a testal roof. The bids came back about eight hundred and sixty eight thousand with, you know, those alt ads, as Darryl refers to them as at the time. And then it was suggested to go back for value engineering. And then the finance committee went and did their value engineering process. Somehow or another, the new project came out and it was much more effective, as we see. We did change the five hundred thousand dollar grant during that period, which was a big win. If you look at the old project and you look at the amount of grants that we have lined up, you know, we're we're working, we're, we keep you in the one point two number. If the old bid were eight hundred and sixty eight thousand and assuming there's an adjustment for inflation, let's just say it's a million dollars, including the parking lot. And you have, you know, five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, the net hit to the city is like three hundred thousand dollars. If that, but those numbers are real, that's something I think is palatable, bold. Um, but again, but you know, the main purpose, I think of, what's trying to be done here is, are we making a decision in a vacuum, right? Do we need to go out and sur- survey more or should we, you know, put it on the ballot? The residents decide. It is an election year, so I don't think that would cost much money to to add that.
Well, the, of course, the issue with putting it on the ballot is that the ballot isn't until November fifth.
It's not.
Then we wouldn't get any input until November.
Yeah.
There was probably a six month delay immediately.
Campaigns on both sides, you know, there would be for people and against people, so it could turn it into a political thing. But ultimately, the residents would have the decision to decide if they wanted to spend that money, the taxpayer money.
One of the other issues that was raised, uh, sorry, to complete the history, uh, Gary Colsat, the first thing he said when he looked at the building before we engaged him was level the whole thing. The issue, if you level the whole thing and you start and you scrape it, to use the slang, um, is it's legal nonconforming in the setback. So we would have to make the building smaller. That wasn't considered to be a feasible option because we wanted to stay in the setback. So maybe there is another alternative, which is to scrape the entire thing, but stay in the setback, right? On that, and I hate to make things complicated, but I do believe that you have to have, consider all of your alternatives that are mutually exclusive and collectively exhaustive, right? So I discussed with our city attorney yesterday, can we apply for a variance to scrape the entire building and remain in the setback? And between Diana and Kirsten, they said, it's probably not a good idea. You may be able to do it, but you know, it they wouldn't recommend going there. Kirsten did identify that this building is zoned R one, right? So residential, single family. And I can't remember what the, if it's R one eight or R one twenty or whatever, it's probably R one twenty, I would think. But that has certain setbacks to it, but this property could be rezoned. And we could rezone it with different setbacks. So that's an alternative where you could go through the rezoning and still build the footprint that we wanted. But uh then it then scrape the building. And I believe that the contractors said, if you, if you, the difference between scraping the building and and propping up the existing building is you incur costs for shoring, which means holding up the walls. It's, it makes any construction much more expensive. Um, so, you know, one alternative could be uh scrape the building, build inside the setback and make it smaller, you know? So, but that will require, that would require new building permit, new, totally new plans, et cetera.
Is it nonconforming just towards, uh, is it just one side?
I believe it's just one side. I think we're okay in the setback in the front against uh Highway nine.
That is correct. That 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 is absolutely correct, uh, Mr. Megichek. And the variance procedure is, I think some of you are aware of that. A nonconforming use means that whatever the setback is now for whatever zoning we has, we encroach on that area. Three, four feet or whatever. So it's an existing encroachment. So to approve a variance, the council would have to approve the variance. They're the only body that approves or disapproves of variance. In my thirty years of doing this, I've never had a conforming non-use been denied in a in a public center because it's already there. It's not like we're, there's no impact to the community. There's no impact to the neighborhood because it exists, but that would have to be a finding of the city council, which again, I've never had that fail.
Could you explain that a little bit more? So we, are you saying we could scrape the building and put it back there provided it was there before?
Absolutely, if the council finds that to be agreeable. And I've never had that decline in my career because it's already there. But when you look for a variance and you're going to impact your community, like I want to go five feet close to that house that doesn't currently exist, then there's issues like, I bought my house here, I don't want this approaching on my property, there there's an impact now. But with like existing nonconformance, there is no impact to the community if you maintain it. That's usually the findings that I've had with the council in the past, but again.
Could you follow up with Kirsten on that and give her an example? Because I think that that could be a big uh change in the value engineering. If we could take several hundred thousand dollars in cost.
That's exactly. My feedback is two contractors said one to two hundred thousand dollars in savings just by being able to scrape it.
Oh, and then it's new materials that aren't termite eaten.
Correct.
Yeah.
All of Dakota and say.
Yeah.
I have a comment that you're probably not going to want to hear. But I think Mr. Leonardo's uh idea to put it on the November fifth ballot is absolutely the most democratic way to do it. Now, it does put us out seven months, but how many months have we already been on this project? I mean, I, and they probably won't agree with me, but I just felt like I needed to say that because I thought that was a very astute uh comment to have it on the ballot. And then we would know is if the voters at least wanted it or not.
It would be tricky to educate voters because we'd have to say, this is what's considered, these are the potential grants. I mean, it, they'd really have to read a lot to inform themselves.
It's uh sure.
Yeah, my point of work is, until we get the new bids and the city council decides what the budget is, this group really can't make any decisions. We've been talking about a lot of things here, which we may have to deal with, but I think we're putting the cart before the horse. And while I found the discussion interesting in many ways, it's irrelevant because until the council says this is what the budget is, this group, this committee can't make any other decisions. So um I'm ready to say that I think we've done all we can do today in terms of areas of these issues. But uh we need to get some numbers on the bids and the council has to decide what it wants to spend. And then it comes back to this group and we can talk. By the way, Jay and I agree with you uh that I'd like to seriously consider that uh in terms of finding out what the community wants. But I think at this point, you know, our hands are tied until the city council decides what the budget is. And so I would respectfully move that we need to share this meeting.
Couple of points. First of all, remember, we're talking about, let's call it one point nine million dollars. Let's round up to two million, just to make the numbers easy. A two million dollar decision, I think to even consider putting that decision on a ballot doesn't, doesn't work, have a cost benefit to me. Having said that, also, when you go back to contractors, they're not looking for a two million dollar job. Like, when you look at the cost of new construction that Masai does in in Montessorino, you can add another zero onto that. Like, if we had at least one more zero or two more zeros, we can start to play this game. But we're talking about something that is thirteen hundred and twenty five square. And if we make the building smaller, you know, it, my son says, Dad, don't overthink it. Because the cost benefit isn't there. So let's, I I would encourage us always to to put it into perspective. Um, so, but I I think this has been a valuable discussion this morning because the council, and I'll speak for myself on council, I like, I don't want to have this discussion in chambers. I'd prefer to have community input at the at the uh committee, Better Streets Commission at this level so that so that council is able to hear, you know, from the community through the process. So.
Agreed.
When it goes back to council, um, is that possibility to say scrape it? And new construction within the confines of of what exists now? Because if that takes up a big chunk and you had your big box of A, uh, that reduces that one already. That's significant.
I I think that option fits well within the direction that the council gave to stop yesterday.
We we intend to bring that as an option, yes.
Okay.
Can we, for time being reasons, kind of uh work in parallel on the budgeting with the the variance? Can, can we work on that and um getting the variance approved?
Yes.
At the same time, we work on figuring out the budget?
I think that's very uh very appropriate suggestion. So we will ask our finance manager to uh look at the finances, the reserves, what what we need. Uh, we've imposed a rule upon ourselves to have a certain reserve. And so we don't want to violate that if if possible. And then, yeah, look at the variance in parallel. We can, I I think we can do it all in parallel rather than in series. Okay. Um, any other remarks, suggestions?
I will renew my motion to adjourn, Mr. Jay.
I'll second that.
You've got future agenda items on here. I think we should approve the survey that was done so that at least we've got another data point, uh, so that it addresses council's immediate concern. And then as well, um, I apologize for that. Uh, as well, I think the future agenda item should be uh Lon's uh volunteering to do the survey. You know, so.
So noted, I agree. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Review of the the survey, both surveys that were done. And then we will present, you can present your draft at the next meeting. All right, if there is no other business, I will adjourn this meeting at ten or eight. Thank you.